Good morning. Today is Thursday, July 8th. This is a special meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners. Call this meeting to order. Yeah, our first item on the agenda is I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public input, public comments and discussion. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. There's no public. Anybody on Zoom? Justin? Okay. So we are here for interviews for the community center coordinator position. And we have Giselda?
Yeah, yeah, and everyone always gets confused. Everybody just shorten it shortly, sit short to Giselda, which is easier.
So tell us about yourself.
Um, I am originally from San Diego, so it's a big difference like the city life to rural Nevada. But honestly, I would have traded, I wouldn't trade the city for rural Nevada anymore. Um, I come from a background of a lot of admin, a lot of like fast-paced office dealing with a bunch of different customers. I dealt with your really grouchy customers and then your really mellow ones. I'm used to working fast with a lot of people. This, I'm gonna be honest with you, my last job was like the first job, me working with the community and seeing how a lot of people needed help out there and I really enjoyed it. It's been really different and I really liked it just because I've kind of gotten out there. I don't know a whole lot of people, which I kind of like because you kind of stay out of that zone, but I like, you know, when I go out, especially here and oh, I remember you, I talked to you and you know, the whole purpose was me helping and I feel I did like a lot. So I come from a lot of that background, just that helping getting out there and the resources.
So what brought you from San Diego to the big city of Love Lock?
So originally, when me and my husband got married, we moved to Montana because he's a ranch hand and he's, we got tired of the city. Just it got too crowded for us. We were a young couple trying to stay our heads above water with everything going up. So he just said one day, let's move to Montana. And I was like, let's go. Let's go. So we wait and I love it. It's breathtaking. And then from there, we worked our way down to Wyoming and then eventually Nevada. And he likes the desert. He's, he comes from a background of the desert. I had come from it too, but I don't like it so much anymore just because of the heat. Somehow the heat, I'm not used to the heat anymore. If I could get snowed in, I'd be in heaven. But that's what brought us here. He worked for the seed punch and now he day works. So and I like it here. It's not too big. It's not too small and you have Reno in case of an emergency or if you need something big, there's your biggest city. But I like the community and how I see everyone like coming together again after COVID and bringing all the activities and the people back and let's get rid of the crumpiness and get to that, you know, happy place.
Yeah, well, welcome to Love Lock.
Thank you.
So what we do is we take turns asking questions. So mine to ask you is what accomplishment are you most proud of?
The, my past job, I I, in my ignorant mind, I didn't think mental health was an issue. I was always brought up, my parents were very black or white. For me, and this is gonna sound bad, but I'm gonna be totally honest with you guys. I thought mental health, no, it's just weak minded. It'll get over it, she'll get over it. But then when I saw it like face to face and we lived it kind of in our family, I was like, this is a, this is a real thing. This is, this is happening. Like, there is such thing as depression and people, you know, just getting lost in their own head. And now that I've seen it face to face, I'm like, this like, this is not a joke. We are here to help people for a reason and we're gonna, as long as this grant, you know, blast, we're gonna get out there and help them. So my biggest accomplishment was seeing people actually not making them, but letting them know there are resources out there. There is people that could help, even your neighbor could help you, but you need, we needed to get them to release all of that stress and especially once COVID hit, I think a lot of people were just down, like you had a lot of people scared. They didn't want to come out of their house. I don't work with the seniors and I saw it at the senior center. And then towards like the last days of the grant, I started seeing the seniors like laughing and joking and I mean, their jokes are hilarious once you're there. They have no filter. So for me, it was like a big accomplishment to get a couple, I'm saying like, thanks for helping, you know, it helped those 10 minutes or those 15 minutes helped, you know, you made me laugh or that for me is the big accomplishment, like getting that smile from the community and letting them letting you know that you've helped.
Where did you actually work?
So I worked out of the depot and I saw you in a couple of Zoom meetings. Yeah, I worked out of the depot and I would go either, I also had Humble until they found a new RA for there, but I would go to the Boys and Girls Club and then they call it the river where like a lot of the homeless people were at. So I got to do a couple of trips there and then one stays at the senior center with Crystal and Alejandra, I think her name was, over there, so.
Okay, good. I haven't been to the senior center since COVID.
I can't, I can't say that.
Yeah, so it was, for me, that's my big accomplishment, just seeing the people like say thank you and they let you know, you know, it's a senior. They'll tell you if they like you or not.
Oh, yeah.
They have, they're in their right.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, what computer and office skills do you have?
Office skills, I have, I'm zoomed out. How everyone seen, I couldn't, if you, if anyone's still doing the Zoom, I'm savvy in Zoom. And then there's the Teams app, that's like Zoom, but that one connects like to the email, Microsoft Teams, Outlook 365, it's called. Um, I'm very savvy in Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel. I'm a little bit newer when it comes to like a spreadsheet, but if you need a flyer done, I know how to do the flyers. If anything needs research, I know, Google it, Yahoo it, email it, anything that has to do with a PFA. Um, my typing skills are 45 hour words per minute and I think that's about it.
Good job. How are you scheduling?
Perfect. I'm not gonna like, everything has to be on schedule with me, even if, even if I could get it days before, I have to, I could multitask, but if I need to schedule that like now, I'll do it now. And then get it out of way and get to the next event or the next person or scheduling, whatever it is. And I always have to, always, always.
Okay, so this is a customer service facility and will require good customer service skills. Tell us about a situation where you demonstrated good communication and customer service skills.
I had a, I had a, I wanna say, and I'm not gonna say a customer or person come into the office and he had no clue how, didn't speak English at all. So I'm bilingual and I was there and he was having a hard time teaching his son, well, I guess his son teaching him how to Zoom because of school.
Yeah.
So he was an older person and was kind of irritated because he couldn't find the speaker button, which sometimes I couldn't.
I can't find it myself.
No, I just moved. So then he walked in with his son and his son somehow couldn't really communicate with him because he knew more English than Spanish. So they walked into the office and I said, you know, in Spanish, I was like, good afternoon, how can I help you? He said, well, someone told me you can help me, you know, I'm very irritated because my son needs to get on this Zoom class and I can't help him. So then I was like, well, come, come in, you know, sit down, let me help you. So I was kind of new at Zoom, but I wasn't gonna tell him that. So then I said, um, he's like, I have my phone, but my son has his tablet, you know, can, can you help me because I don't understand, this is like very new to me. So then I said, yeah, sure, sit down. And um, he sat down next to me and I was like explaining to him, like, if you don't want to be on camera, you know, you just push here. And if you wanna be on mute, I was like, if you're gonna say something, just be careful, you know, put yourself on mute. So I was like explaining everything to him and he's like, well, can you write it down for me? And I said, yeah, I'll write it down for you. You can even take a screenshot of this stuff. I was like, that way you'll have it on there. So I helped him and then his son was like, perfect. He's like, I couldn't get that word out. And he's like, I know more English than Spanish, which I've seen a lot now. And that was my customer.
Good job.
Throughout the year, there are several instances of large events back to back, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, especially during the holiday seasons. For example, we have Turkey Bingo. And P, the, the hospital has a long-term care party, crab feed, Lincoln Day breakfast, multi-grad, grad night parties. So what we have are just things that are happening, one event right after another. Multiple, how do you ensure that there is adequate staff for the cleaning and setups between these events? And how do you deal with staff shortages if there's an illness or a vacation or whatever?
Well, first you have to get your, I would say, get your people or your staff in a little meeting and tell them the schedule. This is what we have going on today. It's gonna last from certain hour to certain hour right after we're gonna clean, you know, we're gonna leave everything spotless. And then get ready for the next event. If you, I've always been, if you could plan ahead, we'll plan ahead and just make sure to stay on time because a lot of times even that 20 minutes could set you back so much. So we'll just keep out of each other's way and start, you know, focus on that task that was assigned to you. And then if it's back to back, it's back to back, like you have to get it done and you know, you have to not please, but you wanna put your facility in a good name with the community because that way they'll always come back, especially if you have good service and you keep your cool, even if you have that customer that's, you know, not happy, you'll, you want the people to come back and say, you know what, she did a good job, like I'm gonna go with her because she helped us push through it or we were running late and even though, you know, she, she helped us. And if you have shortage of staff, then you're just gonna have to work as hard, like you never know when people are gonna get sick or their child is sick or something came up, like you have to get it done. There's, for me, there's no excuse, like I've been in that situation and it's like, I'm, I'm sorry, you know, I have to go or I'm sorry, I have to stay and I'll help with whatever I can. And I don't mind getting my hands dirty, like I'm pretty sure I'll be there, you know, mopping or sweeping or vacuuming or picking up the the trash or taking it out. And that's, that's fine with me. That's kind of what you have to do once, you know, you're a manager, supervisor, coordinator, whatever you are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This position al- also requires assisting with setup and teardowns after an event, which is usually after a back-to-back event. Will you be able to move tables, chair and chairs along with vacuuming, helping, cleaning restrooms and windows by yourself?
Yes, I, the, the last meeting we had for the collision, it was at the community center and we walked in there. Like the setup was totally different. So yeah, we like, we did it fast and everything got done. So yeah, I'm pretty good about, I have experienced cleaning and you know, getting your hands dirty and let's do it fast. Come on, like, you know, you're not gonna leave it sloppy, like it has to get clean.
Good. This position is not always an eight to five, Monday through Friday job. You will be called or texted by renters, the staff, the sheriff's office or others at all hours of, of, of the day. And with questions such as unable to get into the building, cannot lock the doors, need a projector and equipment, cleaning requirements and such, will you be, will you, would that be a problem for you?
No, I have, I got lucky this year and I got a reliable babysitter. Then I could just walk next door and be like, I'll be right back.
Good job.
How would you handle a confrontation with a person who is unhappy with the situation while renting the community center? And you kind of answered this already, but if.
I would bring him aside or bring him into the office and just say, ask him or ask her or he, what was the problem? You know, what could we do to fix it? And if it could be done, it has to get done. If not, then you know, just kind of meet in the middle. If you, though, I feel the, when there's a problem, it's the way you talk to people, you know, if they're being loud or, you know, just you can't get them to calm down, you kind of give them their space. But it's always, you always have to keep your calm when talking to a person that's already irritated or mad. You know, you just have to listen and pay attention to why he or she is mad. Just try to make them happy.
Explain the importance of confidentiality in workplace.
In a what?
In the word, explain the importance of confidentiality in workplace.
It, I think the word says it itself. It's confidential, like there's, it's common sense. When you're in a workplace, you can't, you're not in high school, you know, you're not out of with your friends, you know, gossiping or anything, like the word says it, it's confidential. So it's an employer or coworker comes to you with something that's confident, it stays between you and that person, no matter what, because she or he is trusting you already, you know, and you don't know the situation, so it's confidential.
Good. What has been the highest pressure situation that you have been under in recent years and how did you cope?
I wanna say it was the homeless situation in Winomaca. I didn't, I had never seen a homeless person in Winomaca, but then again, I just go to Walmart and come back. But it was for a minute there, I thought, I was like, I'm gonna get attacked here.
Yeah.
It's just there. The situation was just me getting thrown in and here, talk to these people and you know, see if you could help them. So you know, me thinking that they're not even gonna listen to me or, you know, not even acknowledge them there. They did acknowledge I was there and it was just kind of like a pulling of the sutter, like I need your help. And I kind of got overwhelmed and I wanted to go in my corner and cry, you know, for them, with them. But you know, they're not even in their right state of mind. It was, it was either they were hungry or they needed that high that I couldn't give them. I mean, I could give them food, but when they're throwing it back at you, it's, they're not there. So you just have to be patient stay and take a breather and talk to them and just, you know, make sure that you're putting yourself in a safe position and they're in a safe position. So that was my furthest one, just getting them to understand that I was there to help them either with food or talking and not giving them that high that they wanted.
So why do you want to work here?
Because I like Love Lock. And I kind of know the community a little bit, like I said, I, I'm, we've been here for two, a little over two years. I don't know a whole lot of people. I just know, I think I see a person, a new person every day. And this is not a huge town. So if it's part of my background, working with the community and I read kind of in the description, you work with the community, you work with outside people or the people that come in and set up or help you set up. And I'm a people person. I like to talk, if you guys haven't noticed, and I move my hands a lot.
And you're not Italian.
So, and I'm, you know, I like that, the events. I like to be able to be there and help anyone that's in need, you know, when, if they have a special, like it's, it's a wedding, a baptism or whatever that it is, and it's special to them, will mature, it's, it gets done and it's on time and they're happy. And if they're not, then you know, I could always talk to them and see how can I help them or what else do they need? If I can make it happen, I'll make it happen. But if I can't, then I'm just gonna be honest and be like, we can't do that.
Good.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, if you guys could tell me a little bit how it works, who, am I the, would I be the only one there if the position gets offered to me or how many people? Because the times I've been there, it's just, I've only seen one person and he comes to open the door and leaves and no one's there and I'm like, okay, who's here?
So other than cleaning and or maintenance type people, you are it.
You are it.
You're, you're, you're that. Uh, this position reports to Shayla.
And you will work with John and Myren, Myren is the custodian there. And you will have, you have an office there and it, Heidi will probably, well, Heidi has time to train her. Um, she is the former community center director or coordinator. And so she will probably work with you to show you how everything's done. And then the phone is now on a remote system.
I've called this.
And, and so,
You can pick up the messages from wherever you are.
Okay, yeah. And that way you can, you, you can be in there when you need to unlock doors and stuff and, and otherwise just work your schedule away.
Yeah, because I've been there, I helped for the vaccine, right, for the seniors and I just met Sean Burke. He's the one that was there opening doors. And then there was another gentleman in a sandy hair. And he was also helping with the doors, but I saw that you guys have a kitchen and then the, the back, like kind of meeting rooms, the smaller ones. But I was like, who's, like, is this open full-time or is it not? And when I had originally seen the post for the coordinator, I called a couple of times to see if I could drop off the application there. And then until I saw it on the website, I was like, oh, okay, I know where to drop it off. But yeah, every time I've been there, it's like someone comes and locks the door and then.
Yeah, we don't have, we haven't had a coordinator since March.
Yeah, and so Heidi's been helping out. Um, how soon would you be able to start work?
Asap.
Okay.
And you know that the job for now is a 20-hour-a-week job, not a, not a full-time job. I saw in your application where you had checked full-time.
Right. Is it, would it potentially move to a full-time?
I would hope so, in fact.
And, and it might be a combination of positions, not just the community center, but doing other work to make it full-time or something like that. But would you be interested if it's just part-time to start with? And it has part-time benefits with it, you know, insurance and you know, everything else and retirement and all that.
Yeah, it would, yes, it works for me. I'm, I think, I'm pretty sure it'll move to full-time, but yes.
Because, um, you know, our budget's pretty tight, but um, I think that's something, I can't speak for everybody, but it might be something we could work on. So the way, the reason we're meeting like this is anytime the three of us get together, we have to do it in an open meeting because of the, the laws and, and the open meeting law and forums and all that. So what's next, Donna?
That's it. Very good. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll be in contact. Thank you.
We'll make a decision quickly.
So there's still, what, five other ones out there to come in and interview? There's still five other ones to come out there to interview. Okay, so we have a selection of a community center coordinator. Set the salary, office space, office equipment and supplies. I have, I mean, her answers were always spot on.
I was, she was outstanding. I gave her five and everything.
I did too. I don't have the four on here.
Yeah, and I mean, my gosh. And.
Yeah, willing to work. What do you think?
Could she help you with custodial for the other half? Could she help you with custodial for the other half? But I mean, at least for a while, until we know where our budget is, cuz we have other problems too, we. Have other people that need help on a permanent basis, but I'm wondering if maybe that would help supplement it. For at least a little while.
There are other facilities I think I could use or help me. So Karen, where do you, where do you bring her in at?
Or review in three months, we could do that. I think.
Starting at how much? Sixteen, I mean, to me, that's.
And then the help that she might be able to do for you, because that would be up to her too, um, that would just be hourly, right? Yeah, but for right now, at least, something, so. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and hire at sixteen dollars an hour and have her start Monday if she can.
I'll second.
And then, uh, when she's there, you could talk to her about if she's interested in doing, just supplemental for right now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, aye, motion passed. I mean, the other stuff, the office equipment and supplies, that's just given to. Okay, public input, public comment and discussion, I'll actually maybe take another matter raised under this item of the agenda. Until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Seeing none or hearing none. None, this meeting is adjourned.